Okay. So it is 6:30. I want to jump right into this meeting and we're sort of going to wing it. Tonight, we're going to do the presentation by the police department. Then I'd like to adjourn the meeting so that we have an opportunity to go downstairs and see the van while it's still fairly light out. And then we'll come back and do the discussion of the budgets. Okay? So for purposes of opening the meeting, I will, for the record, call this special meeting of the city council and board of public safety to order. For the record, it is Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021. We are participating via Zoom and here in the council chambers, participating via Zoom, I have Councilman Oliver and Councilman Waldron. Here in the auditorium, I have Councilman Rubino, Councilwoman Wagner. I have Commissioner Cogswell, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner Bingham, and Commissioner McLeod. Yeah, I don't see if...
Did you do Drake?
Yeah, I did. So we have a quorum of both boards. I'll jump right into item one on the agenda, just so we can get this little bit of business put to bed by the council. I will entertain a motion herein acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority to schedule a public hearing for June 14th, 2021 at 6:30 PM for the purposes of setting the sewer user fee for the period of July 1, 2021, ending June 30th, 2022.
Move one.
Thank you, Commissioner, Councilman Rubino, Councilwoman Wagner seconded. Are there questions on this motion hearing? None. I'll call it. All in favor? Council members in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And who doesn't require a motion? I'm going to turn this over to Chief Baldwin.
Thank you, Mayor, and also members of the Safety Board members, Chief Tawee, Chief Tripp, and Captain Braun. I did realize that tonight, when I had planned this, that this was going to be a different meeting tonight where we have a joint meeting of the Safety Board and the City Council to discuss budget. I thought it was going to be just a regular Safety Board meeting. But the mayor was gracious enough to allow me to continue on with this part of our meeting tonight. And the reason why I wanted this is because there's a special person who is no longer with us that I just want to recognize this evening, and that was Commissioner Robert Conforti. He was very instrumental and he was on the Vehicle Replacement Committee. The mayor appointed him to be a member of the Vehicle Replacement Committee. And he along with other members of the Vehicle Replacement Committee, they go through the budgets and they see what's in the, what's available as far as what we can do to replace vehicles within the city, done with the fire department, the street department, and the police department. Well, when I came on board back in 2007, the Torreting Police Department had a crime scene processing unit. Now, I'm from the state of police. I came on board here and my, most of what I did in the state of police was major crime squad and I processed crime scenes. And when I came to Torreting and I saw this repurposed ambulance that we had, it wasn't appropriate enough for the type of scenes that our officers are involved in on a regular and a daily basis. They're out there processing crime scenes, processing accident scenes. They're doing many, many different things for the members of this community. And to be able to properly do the right stuff, they need the right and proper equipment. I discussed this with the mayor and I discussed this with then Commissioner Conforti and other members of the board. Commissioner Conforti was extremely instrumental in moving this project forward. We were able to use different funds to bring the costs down. We used asset forfeiture monies to be able to really offset the expense of this vehicle. And again, Commissioner Conforti was extremely instrumental in helping us. So with that said, we're going to dedicate, I decided that because Bob was so important in obtaining this thing, I'm dedicating our crime van to Commissioner Robert Conforti. And I have a few presentations that I'd like to make if you may come up and be happy. I appreciate it. So this is going to, we've had a couple of plaques and they're going to hang and they're going to be placed inside the crime van. So it'll be, it'll be there for the next probably 20, 30 years that this vehicle will be in use or serve the department. So the plaque states, Commissioner Robert Conforti, October 3rd, 1953 to July 29th, 2020. He was in the Department of Public Safety from July 16th to July 29th, 2020. Unfortunately, just about a year ago, he passed away. Torreting Police Department Investigations Vehicles dedicated to Blake Robert F. Conforti Jr., City of Torreting, Public Safety Commissioner, who was very instrumental in authorizing the acquisition of the state-of-the-art mobile investigators unit. This specialty vehicle will serve to bring enhanced professional police investigative services for criminals and accident investigations to the citizens of the city of Torreting well into the future. Our city and the Torreting Police Department owe a great debt of gratitude to Commissioner Conforti for his unwavering support of the Torreting Police Department and the significant impact that he has had for our city. May we never forget his committed contribution to this community that he so proudly and faithfully serves, dedicated this second day of June, 2020. And the other part of this plaque identifies all of the people that were involved with the acquisition of this vehicle. Glenn Royals, a big part of this as well. Glenn and Bob worked together on the Vehicle Replacement Committee. Glenn's here. Glenn, I also want to recognize Commissioner Angelo LaMonica. He was working with Bob on the Department of Public Safety and he came here to also recognize Commissioner Conforti. Commissioner Saharic was contacted and Commissioner Saharic obviously sends his regards, but he couldn't make it this evening. He also wanted to offer his support. I have one more certificate. For his civilian service for all that Commissioner Conforti had done for us. For his dedication of time, effort, and leadership in furthering the mission of the Torreting Police and Fire Departments that has had and will continue to have a direct benefit to our community. We honorably award this certificate posthumously to Commissioner Robert F. Conforti Jr., who served on the Board of Public Safety from July 16, 2013, until his eminence July 29, 2020. Commissioner Conforti served as a member of the Vehicle Replacement Committee who through his efforts was extremely supportive and instrumental in the acquisition of the Torreting Police Department's new mobile investigations vehicle, in which the state-of-the-art piece of equipment is dedicated to his memory and service to the city of Torreting. Commissioner Conforti is also recognized for his contributions to the acquisition of fire apparatus for the Torreting Fire Department that are used daily for the safety of our citizens. May we never forget the selfless contribution that he made to our citizens through his leadership as Public Safety Commissioner. Both Chief Waldman and Chief Tawee, on behalf of the Torreting Police and Fire Department, will forever be grateful to him, a true friend and dedicated service for his humble service to ensuring public safety for the citizens of the city of Torreting. So again, Mayor, some...
Yeah, no, the only thing I want to say is the money's very worth it. It's not only on the Board of Public Safety, on the budgets of the city, and our Republican Party community, he loved serving in public safety. He wanted so much to be a part of everything that provided the support that both the fire chief and the police team needed to make sure that their department were well-staffed, prepared to respond to any emergency. I remember in particular, there was a time where Rhonda was really quite ill and we were in a budget season and I remember that he kept arranging his schedule so that he could be with Rhonda while she was in the hospital, but making sure that he also, he posed attention to his commitment. And he felt very strongly, once he made a commitment, it was, it was like his work. He's so proud of the work that Bob did for us here in the city. Grateful that Rhonda and her family shared him with us because we know that. Anybody that's sitting here knows this is a commitment. This is time away from family. It's important work, but it is also work that does take away from your sense of community. So on behalf of the city of Torreting, we're tremendously grateful. We're so pleased that the chief brought to do this. And at this point, I guess if we want to adjourn and...
Yes, and you know, again, Bob worked with Commissioner McLeod, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner Cogswell, Commissioner Battle, all the members of the Safety Board and the, I don't speak for them, but I think I can. He held our high respect and he was just a great, great man. When you go see Bonasir, they're going to show you the new vehicle, state-of-the-art. It's a beautiful piece of apparatus. It's not marked up yet. We are having it striped, which has been some scheduling conflicts, but I do have photos of what the concept is going to look like, so everybody can take a look at it down there. I think they have some photos down there. So log on and any questions that you have and you can take a walk through it. Thank you again very much for being here.
All right, so let's, so that the council member and board of safety can get a chance to see this, I'll just recess. I'm looking at Jonathan. So can I have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner, Councilwoman Wagner and Commissioner Cogswell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then we'll re-adjourn in 10 minutes, or 15. Motion. Special.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rubino, seconded by Commissioner Cogswell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are re-adjourned, reconvened. Item three on the agenda is discussion in view of the proposed public, I should say, amended public safety budgets for the fiscal period from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. And I think we'll allow Chief Tawee to kick this off. If you want to just walk through budget amendments.
Yeah, so the big, I'll just go through the changes from the level one request that was in there. The initial request was at a 7.13% over the previous year based upon the feedback. And coming out of subcommittee, we got that down to an overall increase of 3%, 3% increase over previous year when you combine the two departments. So for the fire headquarters, it resulted in a 2.78% increase, which was a reduction of $252,662 from the level one request. For the headquarters budget, for the volunteers, it resulted in a 35.62% increase, which was a reduction of $145,500 from the level one request. Going through it, the big reductions were instead of the four fire recruits to start getting people onboarded in preparation for retirements, we brought that down to two fire recruits, which would bring staff, you know, bring us up to 13 on two shifts until retirement start to kick in. We did, because we lost those two recruits, we lost an overtime offset. So, you know, increase the overtime by $43,999, but we lost that full overtime offset from those two extra positions. Then a lot of it, you saw the reductions in holiday pay, uniform allowance, were attributed to the less personnel because instead of the four fire recruits, it was only two. We did trim our education and specialized training line items by a total of $10,000. $4,000 in education and $6,000 in specialized training. Trimmed our utilities down by $4,000, hoping to keep that line level. Reduced equipment by 2,000, fuel by 700. Building maintenance, we reduced by an additional $5,000. Service agreements, we trimmed down $1,500. Physical exams, another $3,000, which largely is for the placement physicals for the new recruits. We did shave promotional testing down $12,000. The biggest chunk was the capital reserve, which we trimmed an additional $162,500. And, you know, we trimmed the education a little. The, when we trimmed the capital funding, just sort of shifted those projects into the subsequent four years of the five-year plan. So the main projects that wouldn't be funded this year or be reduced would be, we wouldn't fund the US compartment or battery backup for the dispatch center this year. We'd push that off into the subsequent four years. The extractor, we won't, the gear extractor, we wouldn't fund this year. We'd push it into the subsequent years. Hydraulic tool replacement, we shaved that down and only fund that to $20,000. Radio system upgrade, we shaved down to $40,000 funding this year. Self-contained breathing apparatus down to $67,000. We didn't fund any of the fire hose replacement in the capital fund this year under this presentation or technology and data. PPE, we shaved down to $28,000 from the $30,000 request. And then we are, you know, are continuing to monitor or fund those emergency bailout kits, but just reduce that by $5,000 down to $25,000. And the request doesn't fund any of the capital expenses for the volunteer departments, which was a reduction of $110,000 there on the volunteer side. On the volunteer side, the reductions reduced the physical exams by 1,000. Continuing the stipend down, reduced it $20,000 from the level one request. This does reflect, still reflects, reflect the $19,000 increase over the previous year's funding in that line item. Reduced equipment testing down $2,000. Education in the volunteer firefighters down $11,000. But we did still maintain some marginal funding in there for fire one training for the volunteer departments. Like I said, reduce the capital reserve funding and reduce the fuel item by 1,500. So overall, this is, the headquarters side, this reflects $160,840 increase over the previous year's budget, or a 2.78% increase. The other thing to note is this increase does not reflect any general wage increases. We haven't initiated negotiation talks, so any salary increases are not inclusive of this. I sort of rambled there, so if anyone could make sense of it or have any questions, welcome to answer them.
Questions for the chief?
So for the volunteers, you said it's $19,500?
So the...
$20,500? $20,000?
Yeah, so the stipend would be $20,000 per department. And then we did maintain...
Actually, if this, based on the cuts, the cut was $20,000 from the initial request of 60. It will be $40,000 or $20,000 each.
Yeah, it's like 20 per department.
Okay, just wanted to mention. Yeah. And the other thing that I would add, because obviously we do this every year. You'll see the lion's share of these cuts are those capital, capital reserve, capital investments. I think I saw Chief Magnus. He is here. So I continue to keep my fingers crossed that some of these capital investments can be changed or switched over and funded through the American Rescue Plan. I just today received more updated guidance from OPM. So I have the US Treasury guidance, OPM guidance. I'll be reading through these things. I've got to go and pull the act out because I keep referring to the act, just to see what, what capital projects we can move. Chief Tawee and Chief Baldwin and I have also had a number of conversations about going after some of the additional American Rescue Plan funds. I affectionately refer to them as the earmarks. They're actually the community projects as it relates to the radios. So that's a big, a big ticket item that I think would be helpful to move these year-over-year sinking opportunities, get it done, and then start thinking over a longer period of time as to how to reduce our impact annually.
With a commodity like fuel, how do you assess reduction upon that based on the price fluctuation?
It's a risky funding level, to be honest with you. You know, hoping for the best, sort of look at actual, actuals of what the actual budget expenses were from previous years. Obviously, with the way prices are going right now, it's, I don't know, you know, we don't know where those prices are going, but they're probably not going down.
And I can get an answer for you on that because, as you know, we purchase a year's worth of fuel. So we put that out to bid. It's a competitive pricing. So we can get a better number if there's a concern as to whether or not that's adequately funded.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right. Let's move into, I lost my agenda. Let's move into the police department's budget discussion.
Good evening. When we began the initial budget process, I submitted a budget that was 14, approximately 15%. It was reduced through the various boards and committees down to 7.56%. The driving factor in the increase in my budget was the brief fault. Obviously, part of it was the significant capital expenditures, capital increase. Next was followed by contractual general wage increases through the contract. And the third and final one was the new accountability bill, which required police agencies to enact the different programs at a cost to the city. The fiscal constraints further required me to reduce my budget, which I brought it down to an approximately 3%, which I was asked to do by the various boards. I was able to attain, but mostly was through a significant reduction in my capital as well as flatlining many of my current expenses. To obtain this reduction, I eliminated two police officer positions. I also half-funded three current police officer positions and eliminated the deputy chief's position. So I ended up coming in at 3.1%, which was the charge given me. At our last meeting, I was asked to re-initiate the deputy chief's position and half-fund that position, which would take effect in January. That was a $58,500 increase. That brought my budget from the requested 3.1% to 3.72%. Some of the reductions that I had to use, or I had to do for my budget to get down to that percentage, as I stated, was I eliminated $100,000 out of my overtime account and that was placed in there because of the accountability bill that we're anticipating is going to cost us in overtime. I did a reduction in evidence management accreditation, which is another accountability bill issue. I eliminated, reduced that $7,500. Education in schools, I reduced $30,000, again, an accountability bill mandate for just not my department, but for departments across the state. Second, next, I flatlined my electrical fingerprinting fees and we initially reduced funds in our community policing budget as well. I also flatlined my telephone bills, communications. And again, as I stated earlier, the capital reserve, we cut out almost $550,000 for my capital reserve. Specialist squads were also reduced by $12,000. My total cuts for this budget was approximately $1,043,000 from my initial proposal. As I stated, even though a lot of the accountability bill, one of the bigger, the biggest factors in accountability bills, the dash cams that are being required, that is an appro... We have the figure on the dash cams. It's approximately...
$109,000.
$109,000. The city is going to be reimbursed 50% of that. We're hoping that if the state has the funding for that, they'll be able to reduce the, to fund, to half-fund the costs associated with the dash cams and the equipment that goes with it. The, the hope is, is that there is going to be money in the, in the state account to be able to half-fund these positions because all the police, most municipal departments that are required to do so are going after these funds, as are we. The problem with that is that we have to front-load that expense onto our budget first and then we will get the reimbursement once that those items are purchased, as it relates to that. Other issues is we have a, the drug-related mental health increase, which is part of our accountability bill, that had to be increased. And that's about it for my budget. But the biggest part of it is, is the accountability bill contractual and my capital.
Questions for the chief?
Just back to the accountability bill. That's always weighing in my mind. And are there deadlines that you have to do certain things? Do you have a timeframe where you're required to do it or else?
By July of 20, there were some talk about items within the accountability bill that were pushed back by the legislature, but those were more procedural than it was as it relates to any type of equipment purchases, such as the dash cams. We have to purchase those dash cams by July 1st of next year. So that would, so we have to put that in our budget for this year.
Yeah, that was my concern, that certain aspects of that you don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Chief, was the biggest expense was the storage, correct?
Yes, Commissioner. The, and the Safety Board and the Finance, we just redid our contract with our company. And it's, and I don't have the figures in front of me, sir, but it was a significant savings in that contract. And it is specific to the storage. The storage is the largest part of the body camera and the dash cam entities that we have to purchase. And again, I'll be bringing forward before, before the board, the various boards, where we plan on going as far as who our contract will be with, with our dash.
I have a follow-up question, chief, related to storage. How long is that contract for storage?
It's 10 years.
Yes.
So yeah, so we are currently in for our body cameras on a 10-year contract.
And this is the same, the same supplier, the dash cam is the same supplier as the...
Yes, sir. We're looking at that right now. We're more than likely, it would make sense, it would make fiscal sense to go with the same, the same company to, to supply us with our dash.
Okay, and again, the storage feature, the storage is specific to the dash cam, right?
There's, it'll be specific, it'll be a, it'll be cloud-based storage, specific to our body cameras and our dash cameras. They would be, it would all be uploaded into one cloud.
Yeah, okay, but as far as the fees for that, is it, how is it, is that like a flat fee? Does that price come down over the span of the 10 years? Is this the price of doing this kind of thing goes down radically in 10 years?
Well, the initial layout is for a lot of the equipment. So you have to pay for the cameras. You have to pay for all the equipment, the installation, all that stuff.
Yeah.
And then year two, there is a reduction because now you're only paying license fees and the main license fees for each camera, license fees for, it all takes in the storage and all that. And then in our current body camera, every five years, we get a new camera. We get new tasers, we get new cameras, and everything, you know, rolls in.
But does the storage, your cloud costs, does that go down every year?
Unfortunately, I think that at the end of the contract, it, there was an increase. It did go up.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is everybody in the state, all, all departments are pretty much using the same provider?
They're the, yes, for the most part. I, I can't say that every department is using the same provider. It would be Axon is the name of the company, but there, there are other providers, but they are the, the, they are the cutting edge in this, in this technology.
Yeah. The other companies are all similar. It's all similar. It's all storage. A lot of it is cloud-based now.
Yeah. As my father would say, it's the Polaroid model. You know what the Polaroid, you guys maybe are old enough. They'll give you the camera, but they're gonna, they're gonna kill you on, on the film.
And just as a reminder, that, that contract was approved by both the Board of Safety and the City Council in, in June of twenty twenty.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. Somehow it had, the terms had improved.
There's, it all depends on, a lot of it depends on the crime. A lot of it depends on, you know, what the case was, and it's all set by, you know, different statutes and everything. It, it automatically goes. It's, there's like timeframes you can go.
No questions? Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah. I, I, I don't have a question. I just have a comment that I like to make. As I'm sure a lot of you know, I'm, I'm thrilled that the money is being put into the budget for a half-year for the deputy chief's position. My only comment to that is that the uncertainty going forward, because it's a half-year, I don't want to see the city put in a position, I want the city to be in a strong position when and if they go make a hire. And I don't want us to be in a position of, with the uncertainty, that we don't how, we don't hire a qualified candidate, that we hire someone who just wants the position instead of somebody looking to get promoted and, and work to, towards a deputy chief and chief's position. I don't want that position to become a, I don't know the proper words to use, but somebody two years and another person a year, somebody here another year because of the uncertainty that nobody wants to take it unless they're in a great financial situation.
Right.
So I, I, I'm happy that we're putting it in there. I hope there's a plan and that. I'm just concerned. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, and I think that in the interview process, you know, the chief and I spoke about this. Obviously, the chief knows his department. He's, you know, he's in the best position to design that job description for exactly what he's looking for. And then the process, the vetting process, the interview process, I think, I think we've been, we've had good luck. Our last two hires were pretty spectacular.
I'd like to see that continue.
Believe that it will. Yeah.
And we talked about it when we added that, that, you know, we'd like to see from it from the inside to move them up, you know, to get them ready for the next step. So that was one thing that we, we did. And we talk about a succession plan. And, and I really, I thought that was one of our goals to create that, and I want to do that. I don't want it to be assumed that somebody in the department gets it because that causes an issue too, but most definitely would love to see that, you know, you know, under best circumstance.
And that, that would be my goal as.
Yeah, I would hope that. I'm just, you know, I don't want guarantees to that. That gets us in trouble sometimes.
I echo Commissioner McLeod's deputy chief statements. This is hardly, but I had another question, breaking about capital reserve reductions.
Yes.
When it's coming down five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. From the initial request, what aren't you going to be able to get for that portion of the reduction? And then with the remaining fifty-four thousand dollars, what will you be able to get?
Give me a minute, Commissioner. All right, some of the reductions in the capital reserve was our, you know, one of, one of the things that I'm focusing on and I'm going to keep plugging for is a update to our CAT RMS system. We're currently have a, a system that is getting antiquated and getting more and more difficult to manage with upgrades and, and, and things along that nature. So that, that was a, a cut of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. A radio system replacement, myself and Chief Towey have talked about. And the mayor has been in, in conversation concerning a citywide radio system. Initially, that was budgeted to, to go on the state system, which would be a considerable savings down the road for the municipality. And that was in about, about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction. We are, some of the other things that we're putting on hold is some ballistic vest replacements. We're, we're okay right now, but eventually some of these things that we're cutting, we're going to have to, we're going to have to take care of, and we're going to have to deal with down the road. Some heating and plumbing repairs, we've reduced some of that regarding our, our facility. A lot of, a lot of what we're looking at is facility-based. The mayor has just hired, the city council has approved the hire of a, of a facilities manager. So we're hoping that that is going to be able to assist both myself, and I know Chief Towey as well, our facilities and, and trying to bring some of that capital expenditure, expenditure down as well. There's, you know, there's maintenance and repair upgrades that we're looking at. We're looking at potentially a, a structure for, to add on to the side of the building so that we can process evidence, so that we can eventually place the, the crime vehicle in. We, we feel that's very necessary. There's a window replacement. Our building is getting old. A lot of the capital is related to the building. Where we were looking at the replacement of windows, for example, that are almost three quarters of a million dollars. So, you know, we're, we're, we have heat pumps that are constantly going. There's a lot, lot of things within the facility that are starting to show its age and that we, that I budgeted for, but we're just going to have to kind of hold back until some of the funding becomes available. And as the mayor stated, there, there is going to be some funding coming in from this federal government, but we don't know how that's going to play out.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Cap?
Nope.
Are there questions, sir? I'm sorry, ballistic vests, you have to put a hold on?
The, 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 ballistic vests are done on, on a five-year replacement. And we're budgeting ahead, you know, we're budgeting for that, those, those five years when they come forward.
Okay.
So I do have, we, we do have money set aside for that time where we're going to have to replace it. It's like the vehicle replacement. You know, we, we, the money, monies are budgeted for vehicle replacement so that in every year, you have that money available to purchase vehicles as you need to replace them. It's the same, we're, it's the same concept that we're doing for some of the ballistic vests that we're talking about. And, and, and we're talking, is that, it's more, is that for, that's not tech.
No, that's, that's, that's tech. Nope, that's the, that's for our main officers.
Right, because there's two, there's two ballistic vests. There's one for our special entry team, our tactical team that we just actually, I think, was approved by the safety board recently and board of finance and council. And then there's other vests that our officers wear on a regular basis, on a daily basis, and a different kind of a vest. So those are replaced every, there's a five-year, five-year replacement on there, and those are replaced every five years.
I just have one comment. About the new van. Housing that half a million dollar van. It's going to sit outside.
We, we have, we, we worked, we have worked with the Burville Fire School. We have attained a garage space up there. It's going to be secured up there for the time being, and we're currently working on potentially moving it to our traffic barn. We're, we're looking at the logistics concerning that. I've spoken to the mayor about it at our meeting this morning. We're going to try to acquire some space in the old Winthrop Street garage to be able to move things around, because there's some good space there that we might be able to use. When Ray Drew gets back, we're going to have a conversation. We're going to try to get that facility up and running so that we can make room for that vehicle. But I, I agree with you, Commissioner. The, the last thing we wanted was to have this, this vehicle outside in the elements. So I, I appreciate your concern on that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
The other, other option was to move Chief Towey's fire truck out of his bay. So I knew you were talking about that. I don't think he agreed. He wasn't so happy with that.
We just charged, right?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Well, if there are no additional questions, with regard to the amendments that have been presented, I think what I'll do is I'll just take the next six items and we'll go down through each one of these to accept the.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I still have two more budgets.
If you can get through your animal control traffic. Yeah, you had, you had twenty minutes.
My next budget is the traffic control budget. Again, we came in with, initially with a sixteen point six percent increase, which was about sixty-five thousand dollars. I was able to reduce that to three point seven, it would, we brought it down to three point seven nine. Again, a lot of those reductions are repairs and equipment that I, that we eliminated. The capital reserve, we eliminated some of the capital reserve parking, which is another line item which we eliminated. And new equipment, we reduced by five thousand dollars. So we cut fifty thousand, two hundred dollars out of our traffic control budget. The one thing that I just want to bring to the attention of, of the city, as I had in my last presentation, was is that, you know, the city of Torrington owns thirty-nine traffic signals. Those traffic signals are extremely expensive. And some of the, the, the monies that were placed and budgeted were to start upgrading those, those, those traffic, traffic signals. The equipment is, the parts for the, for the traffic signals are unavailable. I could say that Sergeant Baldis and Sergeant Officer Pizarski beforehand did an awesome job in trying to acquire parts. So we have some parts available to replace some of these traffic control signals. But we're looking at, you know, we're going to, these traffic control signals are well over twenty-five, almost thirty years old. And as we, you know, we, we have two electricians that are on staff that work during the evening shift, that continuously upgrade and maintain these, these positions that also include the walk signals. The, the, the big, the big cost in these items is in the big boxes that you see on the side of the roads that control these things, the electronics. So we're, we're having difficulty getting those parts. So, you know, we're looking at a, a six-figure replacement project for some of these traffic, for, for all these traffic lights. So this is just something to consider as we move forward, that there is going to be a point in time where we're going to have to really make, make a, an investment in our traffic control signals. We, you know, this, the state still owns, I don't know, maybe eight or nine, only in our intersection. And the city acquired the rest. Under previous administrations, they acquired those, those traffic control signals. So now we're responsible for those. When there's an accident on the, you know, if, if a vehicle strikes one of the boxes or, or don't walk sign, if, if, a lot of times if they're uninsured motorists, while the insurance companies will pay for those, if they're uninsured motorists, that falls on us. We have to replace them. So there is a significant cost in that part of the traffic control budget. But right now, we're doing okay, but it's just something to consider as we move forward, as we, we try to budget for that. So that's my total increase for traffic at this point was fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three. That's, that's all I have for that.
As you talk about the six-figure replacement fee, are we talking one hundred thousand dollars in six-figure or nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand?
It probably, Commissioner, it's probably on the higher end, quite, quite honestly. I mean, the, the costs are, in some, in some situations, the costs are low, but in other situations, they're extremely high. I think there, there's an estimate between seven and eleven thousand dollars per intersection. And that doesn't count on masked arms and hanging wires and things like that. So that could, there could be additional expenses there. So just one of the traffic boxes now, when it's damaged, is, is anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-four thousand dollars to replace.
Thank you.
Can you get the insurance companies to sponsor them?
Wouldn't some business that has an intersection in front of their store want those fixed? They could sponsor them.
They could sponsor them. They're my best interests.
Should I go on?
My final budget is the K-9 budget. Again, we, the reduction that I was able to come up with is just our fifty thousand dollars out of our capital reserve. If any, I, I, I know the commissioners are well aware of it. Council members, you're more than welcome. We can give you a tour of our current facility. It really is being held together by duct tape. The mayor and Caitlin Neill and members of my staff are vehemently working on getting that facility replaced. So we're, we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have. But the increase in my K-9 budget is about forty-seven thousand dollars. So it might, the, the cost of that was a fifteen point three, three percent increase.
Chief, I was down at that facility. It is all.
Yeah.
And they do a great job with keeping it together like Legos, but
Yeah.
It's, you know, we put it up every year, every year, but there, there needs to be some, some kind of plan. Even if it's public funding, you know, we, we go to the public and ask them to help. All, all the animal lovers out there, I'm sure if you ever go fund me, hey, hey, you know, we get some, some people that were willing to raise money for that. So maybe that might be an idea.
These are options. And I could tell you, I, I can just sing the praises of Caitlin Neill, who is our, our chief animal control officer. She's doing a phenomenal job in getting donations and things along that line. And some of what you're saying, Commissioner, are some of the things that we've discussed to potentially raise some funds for, for a newer facility. And the mayor can speak further on this, but the, the city bond, the city, there's a referendum before my arrival where the city approved a million dollars for the construction, but as you know, things are, are going up.
Because I was at that dog park last week, and there was a ton of people down there with, with the dogs.
And dogs.
We have a dog, I mean, a, a dog facility, so. No, it's a Torrington dog. So you were at a stick house.
He doesn't have a dog. That's it.
It's on, Commissioner, Councilman, it's on Bog Road.
It's a little, looks like a storage.
So as the chief has said, we went out to bid for this project after the referendum. The bids came in around two million dollars, twice what we anticipated. Clearly had no funding to do that. Waited. Another, that was actually two years ago, recently went out to bid, and the bids came in at two point eight million. So what we know is we can't wait any longer. We, in public works budgets, we've identified the additional million dollars to get us to two. But I did submit with the assistance of Chief Baldwin and Ray Drew, our public works director, the narrative for the need for the animal control facility through the congressional community projects. I did receive communication from Jehana Hayes's office on Friday. It's, it's tricky because, and, and you hear me complain about this all the time. The pool of money that we were applying for is for municipalities of twenty thousand and under in population. The other funding pool is for towns or cities with fifty thousand and higher in population. We're at thirty-four thousand, you know, we're that donut hole, that we don't fit into any of these funding streams. But to her credit, Janine Lupo at Jehana's office is working with us to identify some creative ways that we might be able to sneak this in because the property is located in Harlington, which is under twenty thousand population. The other partnering towns with us are Litchfield and Goshen, both under twenty thousand in population. So I continue to keep my fingers crossed that we can get something through that community projects funding. And if not, again, it is the American Rescue Plan that we have to look to. But we cannot put this off another year. It is counterintuitive. So when I look at this fifty thousand dollar cut in the capital reserve or the building maintenance, twenty-five hundred, and it's, it'll take a year to build it anyways. We can only hope that there isn't anything drastic that happens between now and next year at this time, when I hope we're cutting ribbon, so.
And the state's been very good with us. We've been, we, we failed several times on, on the inspection, but they've, they've realized that the city is working hard to get that facility replaced. So they're, they're kind of letting, they're, they're allowing us to make the repairs that we need to make, make it safe for the animals and for our employees.
So Chief, with the cuts they did make, what's going to suffer? What do they need now?
For example, some of the fencing in the, in the runs and the kennels need to be replaced. The gates, there's, I think, a couple of gates that are, two gate doors that need to be replaced, and that's at almost eighty thousand dollars to replace those. those, um, there, it's just, there, we, last year we had a septic issue, uh, that was a significant, uh, cost to, um, uh, to our, um, to our budget, where, um, the septic was completely, uh, clogged up, and they had to replace, um, uh, some of that, um, so there's, I mean, the plate thing was built in nineteen forty-eight, first, first, or am I, am I?
Yes.
Am I right, something like that, yeah.
It needs a historic plaque.
No, don't do that, because then we'll never be able to get it.
No, I was thinking, maybe get some historic preservation funds, that's all.
So, other questions or comments regarding traffic or animal control?
Um, just with the other, uh, councilmen, you with the animal control?
Yes.
What do they contribute?
So, their contribution is just under twenty-five percent of the, um, operating expenses, uh, based on, um, dog fees, uh, and, um, their contribution to offset the, um, expenses, it's about eighty-four, eighty-four thousand two hundred.
For both?
Yeah, combined. And they are very good, um, partners with us, and that's their, um, actually quite, quite good partners.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, then I will go into item four, we'll take each one of these, um, department budgets individually, and I will entertain the motion, uh, this is by the Board of Public Safety, to approve and advance the proposed police department budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-two to the city council, in the sum of nine, nine million six hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars.
I'm moving. Second.
Okay, so I heard, um, Commissioner Bingham, I heard Councilman, um, Oliver, are there questions on the motion?
Are these ones by?
Oliver, go.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry.
Board of Safety, sorry, Dave.
Sorry, my bad.
It's tomorrow.
We do it, please.
Tomorrow.
All right, so Commissioner Bingham, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cogswell, uh, questions in the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, by the Board of Public Safety, uh, I entertain the motion to approve and advance the proposed animal control budget for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-two, to the city council, uh, in the sum of three hundred forty-five thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloud.
Okay.
And second by Commissioner Bingham, questions? Hearing none, yeah, just, you're good, all right, um, hearing no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain the motion by the Board of Public Safety to approve and advance the proposed traffic unit budget for the fiscal year seven one, twenty twenty-one to six thirty, twenty twenty-two, to the city council, in the amount of four hundred eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you, I didn't look up fast enough, was that, uh, Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner McCloud, thank you, um, questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, going into the fire department budgets, I'll entertain the motion, again, by the Board of Public Safety to approve and advance the proposed fire department budget, uh, for fiscal year seven one, twenty-one to six thirty, twenty-two, to the city council, in the total sum of five million nine hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred six dollars.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Cogswell and Commissioner Battle, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain the motion by the Board of Public Safety to approve and advance the proposed volunteer fire department budget for the fiscal period seven one, twenty-one to six thirty, twenty-two, to the city council, in the sum of sixty-five thousand.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bingham, second by Commissioner McCloud, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain the motion by Public Safety to approve and advance the proposed emergency management budget for the fiscal period from seven one, twenty-one to six thirty, twenty-two, to the city council, in the sum of thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
So moved. Second.
I heard Commissioner Cogswell, second by Commissioner McCloud, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so this concludes, um, the agenda for the Board of Safety City Council joint meeting, so I will entertain the motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner, I heard Benedetto, I heard, um, Bingham, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving into the public hearing. Probably printed, printed on the back of my paper, all right, so, um, for the record, uh, it is now seven fifty, um, and at this point, um, do you have the public hearing piece? No, that's tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
All right. That's why it's not on my agenda, it's not one day, all right, so then there is nothing before these boards, and we'll do the public hearing tomorrow night, um, you know, I think what threw me is seeing, um, Chief McCloud's here, so we'll see you tomorrow night? Okay, all right, we're adjourned, thank you. Questions?
Yeah.
Questions?